Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Howley.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, before we proceed to our consent agenda, I do want to add an update presentation from Representative from Burbach Aquatics who's here this evening. They had a meeting this afternoon with Derek Wolfcoole and they want to update us on the progress of the pool engineering and design. So we'll add that under the public forum appearances. Any other additions or changes?
We're discussing several items concerning the Water and Sewer Committee meeting that we had, and there were a couple of items that I had requested that I didn't receive by meeting time tonight. So I would just like to forego where that committee report is at the end of the council meeting.
Okay, that's fine. So Water and Sewer, we'll postpone that. Any other changes or additions? Now we'll move to our consent agenda, just three items. We have minutes from the February 10th council meeting. Approval of a liquor license for the quality Quick Stop and approval of claims in the amount of $173,603.50. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes, but abstain on the minutes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Howley.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to our presentation by our Burbach representative. Join us at the podium.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Andy Pennekamp, Burbach Aquatics, and I'm really just here to update you on the progress. We're looking at going out to bid here soon. So start out a little bit, explain what the next steps are. Right now, we're in design, and the next step would be moving into bidding and then And to proceed with that, at the next city council meeting, we've talked about having the city council look at doing a resolution to move forward with bidding. At the next meeting, then Melanie and Kevin will have a board to present of the final layout. There's been some changes made today and a couple other things going on with the design. So we'll have that finalized before the next meeting, and Melanie from French Reniker will help out with that. So as far as Phase Three, which is our bidding, I'd like to explain that just a little bit while I'm here. What we do there is we split our contract into three prime contractors, which allows your local generals to bid on the project. Pools are extremely specialized, so the two other contracts are for the concrete for the pool and the process piping for the pool. So by splitting that into three, as I said, the general contract for the building is the fencing, sodding, excavation that makes it locally competitive. The other two contractors will use local electricians and some local excavators and that sort of thing, but the buildings is a little bit more critical for your local contractors. That format also helps with the overall project cost. So that's just a little bit about how our bid is set up. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the timeline, give you an update on that. What we're looking at is the next city council meeting is March 10th. So if everything goes well and you'd like to proceed bidding, the notice would then go out that Friday, which is the 14th of March. Then April 10th, we'd be opening bids about a month later. That would give contractors enough time to review the plans and the specifications and put together a good bid. Then at the April 14th city council meeting, that would be awarding contracts to the lowest responsive bidder. And along with that, French Reniker's been working with us and the city to do some site work, some grading outside of the aquatic center and some storm sewer, sanitary, things like that. And that bid would be in November to do some of that work. So it's somewhat of a two-part. We're getting the main parts of the aquatic center out to bid here this spring, and then this fall, when it's more prudent for that site work to get completed, that'll be out to bid in November. As far as the building and the pool goes, it's the basic layout that was presented quite a while back, actually, a few months anyways. There's been some changes to the building to make that flow a little better and some minor renovations that way, but the overall size and shape of everything is as presented to the public. So again, next meeting, we'll have the final version presented. I didn't necessarily want to present that today because there are some modifications we're doing. But if you have any questions, that's fine. Actually, after the next meeting, we'll have the plans and the specifications available in the city hall if anybody wants to review any. And I'm also planning on getting the PDF for your packet that you can look at, your packet information for the next meeting. Yes.
Andy, I have a question. So why don't you finish the timeline? So, okay, say we're on the schedule that you started with for March 10th and we start the bidding. So when is the pool actually going to be usable?
The pool would open next spring. May 31st is typically when pools open to the public. There's ample time there. We could even push that forward if we wanted to. But typically, we stick with the May 31st, you know, get that last weekend in May for an opening. And that would be on schedule for this type of bidding at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Andy? Appreciate you taking the time to update us. We look forward to our next meeting.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks so much. Counsel, our next item then would be to set a public hearing for our 2014-15 budget, which would be at our next council meeting, March 10th, as Ways and Means, and our administrative staff has finished the budgeting process. We had a good review last Thursday, but we will hold our public hearing on the budget for March 10th, so entertain a motion to set that date for a public hearing.
So move.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, you have a contract to approve with Pathfinders RC&amp;D for work on the Crow Creek watershed project. We did discuss that at our budget meeting as we were looking at all of the different elements that were going into the capital projects for this coming year, and there will be some work done on that watershed that would allow us to tap some grant money. So we do want to see this work done. You have agreement in front of you to contract Pathfinders to get that work started.
I would move that we approve the agreement for services.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, seconded by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Howley.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have the final approval for a... Actually, this is a proposed sanitary sewer improvements project, and we have specifications. Melanie, would you like to lead us through that?
It is accepting the project as final.
Right.
This is South Main Sewer. Went from Main Street over towards D Street. I will say there are some outstanding issues with the project related to the easement negotiation side of things, but as far as the contractor stands, their work is complete, and I'm satisfied with their work. However, there are a few things that the sewer department and Kevin knows about that need to be taken care of with the property owners.
Okay. Then entertain a motion to accept this project as final?
So move.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? And are some of those other issues, some of the landscaping?
Yes.
Issues, things like that, that'll probably be addressed when the ground, when the four feet of frozen ground thaws?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on improvement of the sanitary sewer treatment system. I have a mic. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, we have an... I'm sorry, the Engineering Services Agreement for 12th and Burlington Intersection Design and Engineering, and this is the project that we discussed where there would be some safety enhancements for the traffic lighting. There would be crosswalks that would be... What's the proper term?
Stained.
Stained. And we would be, you know, we would be using some community transformation grant funds along with some of the SURF funds that we will have for the coming year. As you know, that Darrell Biscard has part of that in his budget as well, so we would like to begin engineering services on that project. So we have an agreement with French Reniker Association Associates for approval.
Move to approve.
Moved by Howley.
Second.
Seconded by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Now we get to our public hearing on improvement project for the sanitary sewer treatment system. Darren, can you introduce this for us?
The overall discussion for the public hearing portion is if there is any more input as far as which of the two site locations at the treatment plant are concerned, I would accept that at this time. Myself, I haven't heard any more input from anyone, and the committee has met over what we would like to discuss and the action items to follow. But the overall treatment, sewer treatment system, we're looking at in two directions. Facilities plan for the facility itself and its location, and then also the conveyance system, which is the piping that'll bring everything down to the plant. And we have those two facility plans that we'll review next. So the public hearing portion was just over the...
So we'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone who would like to address the siting plans. Darren, have, has the council been presented, the full council been presented, the options for the basins?
No, we haven't, but Mike Starkey from McClure Engineering is here to go over that.
Okay. Okay, Mike, thank you.
What we're presenting on today for this public hearing is the final location for your flow equalization basin at the wastewater plant. And we had the, let me... We had the first public hearing back in September of last year. We were here, leaving that, we decided to look at two options in greater detail at that point. So we have, went back and did additional soil borings at both of the possible sites that we were looking at, and from there, did a more thorough cost evaluation and recommendations, and that's what we presented to the subcommittee, and I'll go through at this point. But the two sites that we were looking at was the, what we call the West EQ Basin, which is highlighted with two colors here, are the light blue areas. These are lands that we would recommend, that is required for purchasing, and red are areas that we are suggesting for waivers, which would basically is just an agreement the city would achieve with these landowners to, with the understanding that in the future, if any expansion or whatever needed to happen, you would have that ability to expand your basin. So the other site that we looked at, meeting site, was the north site here. Hope everybody can see that, but the brown land was the land that we were looking, required to be purchased, and the purple or pink would be lands that we would be required to receive waivers from. What we found is with the north site, that there was a lot more construction issues. It's a steeper hill, there's a lot more dirt to be moved, and when we did the soil borings, we found that there was more groundwater and less desirable sand and soils to deal with there, that would be more costly in both construction methods and long-term constructability.
Mike, can you actually describe that also? Because you are talking about a large berm on that.
Yes, sir. I was getting ready to go through that. The, what we're looking at here is the large conveyance or gravity sewer that's coming down the plant, that is, that we're talking about, the trench raker that they're designing, comes right down through and it's at the edge of this lagoon itself, so it's in the berm itself, which is not a problem today, shall we say, but in the future, should you ever have to get in there and work on it, it's basically, as deep as it would be, would require you to remove or lose half of your basin at that time. Additionally, this is a steep hill, so what we were doing is shaving from the high spot and moving it down to the low spot, and as you do that, that's just never really desirable action, if you can avoid it just because of, and no matter how well, it just doesn't settle as good as flat land. So it's doable, but it's not desirable. So all those items really added to the total. Construction cost for this option was $4 million, and when you compare that to the west, we came up with our opinion of construction cost for the west is 2.9, so we have roughly a million dollars difference between the two options. There is...
Although, that does equalize a bit when you factor in...
Yes, I was just getting ready.
Okay.
And that was a point...
Just let them talk, Mayor.
That's fine. So the other, the other part that comes into that is the fact that we, the land prices that you'd have to purchase. So we have looked at that and what the appraised values and so forth have been for these areas, and we estimate for the north site, the total with land purchases and waivers, we estimate it to range anywhere from 4.4 to 4.6 million dollars. And when we look at the west side, we estimate that range to be anywhere from 3.4 to 3.9. So looking at the highest cost on the west versus the best-case scenario on the north, we still see that there's a $4.5 to $500,000 difference. I hesitate to, you know, these are our estimates as far as with the high end, but those are all negotiations and the land acquisition costs are all to be... But, but we don't foresee or anticipate nearly that the land cost would overcome that million dollars.
So just kind of go over for us, basically, we're going to put a lagoon here. Either way, the idea was it was going to go before in the north, now it'll be towards the west. And so that'll be where the water, when it comes in, it'll get stored there before we're able to treat it? Is that the idea?
Yes, sir. So what will happen is, coming out of the SSES study that we had done for you, we are finding that you guys are having up to 42 million gallons per day, per hour, flow coming out of the plant, which is much higher than the capacity of the plant that you could design. So what we are doing is building you a flow storage or flow EQ basin that as the flow comes in there, we will reduce flow down to 9 million gallons per day and let that flow go through, but everything in excess of 9 million gallons a day would get pumped up to the flow EQ basin and be stored. And then after the storm event passes or flows fall below that 9 million gallons per day, then you'll have the ability to return the flow down to the plant and treat it.
I mean, we have enough pumps to pump it? I mean, there's a lot of water.
Yes, yes, sir. That's all part of the design. So you pump now, you just, you're just not able to handle the 42 million gallons per day. It's more like 10 or 12.
And that size is estimated on the largest rainfall we've had?
Yeah, we've, yes, it's, it's based on a 25-year, I think, I think it's a 10-year storm, but, but we looked at it like you had two storm events back-to-back, like two days. So we tried to be as conservative as we can.
Like how many inches of rain would that mean?
I think it's like 2.5 inches.
2.5 inches?
I think in an hour.
4.6 in 24 hours.
Okay.
And then another 4.6 the next 24 hours?
Yeah.
Oh.
So...
Hope that doesn't...
Yeah, and you do have, you, the benefit of the west over the north, too, is that we can get you 20 million gallons right now for less cost, where on the north, based on the layout of the land and with max, we can give you over there is 18 million gallons. So you have 20, plus you have the ability, just say the weather continues to change or, you know, problems keep getting worse, you have the ability, God forbid, to expand further and store more.
Is that why we want to buy the, have option on the red? Or is that, we do something else with the red area?
Well, the red, all you're doing with the red is buying permission to just expand closer to them, so they recognize that they, there is a basin here and that in the future, they understand that if you guys need to approach them, you have the right to do that. And it also, what it does is, you would want to make sure that there's no houses on this property right now, that if he sells that property, whoever moves in there recognizes that you guys have a wastewater plant there and that they are moving into what they're moving into, conditions as they are.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yes.
Can you, whether it would be you or, why don't you go ahead because you are familiar, can you talk about the three property owners that would be impacted?
Yeah, but on the west side is Lila Williams. She owns properties D and E right here, and then this properties F and G are owned by the Myers family. And so when you compare that to the north, the properties that we would be wanting to take, or we would want to buy this land here still from Lila, be able to cross over and do everything that we need to do there and maintain that, and then these property here is the Conger property. So the, I know that the, I guess you guys can speak more to as far as, I think the next step would be to go and negotiate and have discussions with the landowners to the west here, based on your, if your agreement with that.
Right, well, that would be the, that would be the next step that the council would take in approving the treatment facilities plan, which would have that west equalization basin in it, correct?
That's right. Yes. Yeah, we, there, yes.
Okay. Now, I know the last time we had a public hearing where, you know, the public was essentially given a lot of the same information that we're receiving tonight, we had a pretty good turnout. I guess I'm surprised that we're not seeing any of the public here tonight, that they were aware that this decision was going to be made.
After our, after our meeting in September, we held a second public hearing similar to the one that we did in September. I believe there was a larger number of people that came to that second meeting, and there was a better understanding that was imparted to all those in attendance of what was actually going to go on. I think there was, there was some misunderstanding during the first meeting as far as what waivers were and how they were going to be used in this, in this particular situation. The direct affected property owners for purchase were at both meetings, and one was very comfortable with it and the other one was resigning themselves to it. But the committee has gone over this several times for the last six months or more, and with the determination that the conveyance system coming down and going underneath the, be the north and east side of the retention, the equalization basin, and the long-term effects of maintenance through there, the, the overall cost being slightly higher right now would end up compounding itself into the future with maintenance costs if we ever had to get underneath there. And of course, within 50 years, you're probably going to be looking at that conveyance system out there again. But the overall size of the basins as well, we felt that 20 million gallons is going to be better for our purpose at this point in time than what just a little over 18 million gallon storage would be. And so the committee felt that it was best to recommend to the full council that we choose the west site for the equalization basin.
Great, thank you, Darren. Any other questions for Mike at this time, counsel? No, thank you very much. So we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to our approval for the treatment plant facility. I think you have, you have a copy of that, counsel, with an executive summary. This is as presented and designed by McClure Engineering Company. And any other elements of that, that, Mike, would you kind of point out the, the elements that are in the entire plan?
Sure. I don't know if everybody can see that, but I'll... Is it okay if I step?
Sure, sure.
You just want to take...
Oh, I actually grabbed it. It's a, it's a portable, so you'll take that.
Thanks.
Maybe angle towards our camera also.
Just get out the big hook. No. The, so coming down here would be the, the conveyance sewer, the 60-inch sewer that's coming in. This here is our influence and storm water pumping station. From here, flow is pumped. Everything in excess of 9 million gallons a day would be pumped up here to the west EQ. Also housed here are screw pumps which lift everything up to the start of the plant, and then from there, everything flows by gravity through the plant. Your existing plant really has four limitations right now, things that you're dealing with that you have to struggle. One, it's the flow, you know, we've got to be able to, we're doing these improvements out in the system, we've got to be able to handle the flow if we can get it down to the plant, so we're needing to size everything, take it from, it's around 10 MGD today, up to the, being able to handle up to 42. Two, a lot of your system, especially the headworks in the front part of the plant, is very antiquated and outdated. So with that, you got a lot of stuff that's just, you're not being able to get all the screenings and all the rags and all the rocks and the stuff like that that comes down to your plant. You're not getting that out of there. It makes itself through, through the head of the plant, and then you guys, you have to deal with it with pumps, and it costs you extra cost of breaking your pumps and things like that that you have to repair. So, so that, that's another issue. The third issue is the new limits and rules that are coming from DNR. So we are designing this plant to be able to set you up for the future, so as those rules come in, you're best capable to handle that. And fourth is handling sludge. You've made great strides in handling sludge down there. You've done some improvements and, but we're still, just with all this increased load and everything that we have, there's still some sludge improvements that are needed. So with all that being said, the, the influence pumping station pumps everything up to your headworks where everything is screened and the grit is removed, so we're protecting all the downstream equipment there and getting rid of a lot of the stuff that, that you don't want to have to treat. From there, we're giving you an additional oxidation ditch. The plant right now has two ditches, and we're giving you a third. That's, that's taking you from a peak today of 3... That's, that's taking you from a peak today of three through there that we can hydraulically and everything, you can handle nine MGD through your plant. So then from there, everything, it's also a DNR requirement now that with your new permit, that you're going to have to be able to disinfect and your water. So with that, we're including UV disinfection right here, that's another component. So that's all the structures there. This is your existing sludge tank and then we're giving you an additional sludge storage tank. And over here is your EQ basin. So when I say sludge, that's just the, the byproducts of treating the wastewater, so.
Can we get all this for 4 million?
No, so, yeah, it's, it's covered in your executive summary, it's, that, that cost is a little bit higher than 4 million, so. As far as talking schedule and so forth, the next step here is to, to, for you to approve the facility plan as we presented it. We have had meetings with Kevin and with the plant personnel, Sean and whatever there and made sure they're comfortable with everything that we're doing. But this needs to be submitted to DNR and it goes in with the IUP applications, which is your intended use plans, which is, it's basically starting the construction loan process, so it's the initiation of that process. So you'll see when you're scheduled here, we have two IUPs. One is for the plant work itself and the other is for the EQ basin work. We separated those because there are going to be two projects. So there are two different types of contractors that do the work. But also since we're dealing with the land, the process of going through land acquisition or so forth, that we felt that the timeline for the two were going to be different enough that DNR felt most comfortable for that to be broken into two projects. So, and that's what we've proceeded with. The facility plan will serve for both intended use plans, but it's just a, it's a, it's basically the submittal applications for two projects.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Any questions? Not then entertain a motion to approve the treatment facility plan.
I make a motion to approve it as written.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Also, before we go out on the next item, I want to thank Mike and the folks at McClure for doing the additional engineering that we asked for last fall so that we had a, the most informed information that we could have regarding the, the engineering for the two facilities so that the public understood that both options were looked at very closely. Thank you very much for, for that. Next council would be approving the conveyance facilities plan and that will be Melanie.
I don't have as many pretty pictures as Mike, but I wore a pretty color to me.
Well, yours are all underground, so.
Well, and you, through the closed session at the last couple of meetings, you guys have seen the routes that we're talking about in this facility plan, so not much of it is a surprise. This facility plan again is required by the DNR, required to be written by the engineer that is doing the design work on it. It outlines the concepts of step one and step two. So another plan, when we move into the details of steps three and four, would need to be submitted to DNR at that time, a couple of years down the road when we get to that point. Step one includes 20, around 2,200 feet of 60-inch. That takes you from the treatment plant to about where the trail and 34, the trail, 34 Crow Creek Bridge, right in that area. So the boring under 34 would be a 60-inch pipe with a carrier pipe as well. Then you're looking at another 3,400 feet that would take you to Lamson Woods. So you're looking at just over a mile of pipe on step one. That would be the work, as far as schedule, we're looking at bidding that around September. That depends on how the easement negotiations go, as well as archaeological review still needs to be done on the corridor. And that's being done by the state, but we should know early, mid-spring if there's going to be any hiccups there, so. We don't plan on, but every time I say that, I get myself in trouble, so I won't say it. Then step two, there is stuff shown in this facility plan on step two, but we really haven't reviewed the route with, with you guys, haven't gotten into a lot of the details of it. Basically what we're showing DNR here at this point are the sizes, it's not necessarily the location, but we are turning that in for their review. That's it?
That's simple, thanks, we appreciate it. Council, any, any questions for Melanie? And again, we did, we did go over this when we were reviewing some of the, some of the easements that were being purchased. If there aren't any other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the conveyance facility plan.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. And I also want to extend thanks to Melanie and John from French Reniker for the work that they've done and partnering with McClure again to get as much information to the public as possible about our intended development. Next action item, council, we have the DNR intended use plan application for the wastewater treatment plan. So this again would be tied to our, to our funding. This would need to be submitted, Kevin, prior to us being able to access the funds, the bar funds, yes.
We have a couple of these tonight.
Yeah. So we'll have it for both the wastewater treatment plant and the flow equalization basin. So we'll take first the intended use plan application for wastewater treatment plant improvements.
If you had any questions?
Any questions for Mike on that?
No, I would make a motion to approve the Iowa DNR intended use plan application for the wastewater treatment plant.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you, and then we'll move on to the DNR intended use plan application wastewater treatment plan improvements for the flow equalization basin.
I would move to approve that.
Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. We have a final one, which would be the, the DNR intended use plan application for conveyance step one as described by Melanie, the portion that would be undertaken first. Entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, council, we will entertain a 28E agreement with Jefferson County Soil and Water Conservation District regarding the Crow Creek watershed project. And Kevin, could you define the purpose of the 28E?
Yes, this is in relation to the work that we're going to be doing for the SWCD's portion of our, this, this is related to the SRF interest payments program that we're going to be doing. This will be $250,000, it'll be for miscellaneous, or not miscellaneous, but chosen areas around the different watersheds around the city to help basically retain water and, you know, help with the different scouring issues that we have on Crow Creek, for instance. And these may be 25 ponds, I'm not sure if we have a number yet, Melanie, of the actual ponds. We have some, some picked locations that are possible, but it could be 25 ponds for a $25,000 match. Of course, it could be, you know, 30, I guess, you want to go into that for a second, Melanie?
Yes, looking at the agenda, I should have put the next one first. Actually, your next item has a description of how the funds and the sponsored projects, sponsors, sponsored projects work. The IUP applications that you just approved total around $26 million. And with the sponsored project application, you can use 10% of that for water quality improvements. And so in this letter on your next item, it outlines where the city would like to spend that money. And that includes within the city of Fairfield, we're looking, the city, if awarded the money, would like to give some of it to Maharishi University, or I should say, we're going to be working with MUM on constructing a water quality feature on their property, so that everything would be contracted through the city. But it would allow them to meet some of their master plan goals, as well as water quality issues within, within the watershed. We're also looking at bank stabilization of Crow Creek and possibly Indian Creek. Trails council has seen some undermining of some of their bridges due to scouring and so we can pull them in as partners on this project as well to, to, to help them with the money that you get from your interest rate. And then lastly, the item that you have before you would be giving money to the Soil and Water Conservation District. You can make the most impact to a stream and how much it flashes by doing things upstream. So by building equalization base, essentially ponds in the upper portions of the watershed, you can make a great impact on the stream. So the 28E agreement would be if this money is awarded, the Soil and Water Conservation District can use their existing programs and administer this money. It'd be like the federal government giving them money, but in this case, the city is giving them money to continue to do the work they're doing.
Exactly, and so we basically have it broken up. You have about a $2 million bill there for the SRF interest and we have it broken up between about $750,000 for the quote city, $500,000 for the efforts on MUM campus and $250,000 for the basins. So we're going in some different directions with the application, but there may be some small equipment acquisition through our $750,000 and it would also be for pervious or permeable pavements on our, our two recreation projects, for instance, and some bio swell related to those construction sites. And it's not just bio swells and green type maneuvers that are exercises we'd be doing on the MUM campus, but as well, we'd be looking at outflows that they have on various buildings and, and looking at how they impact, that campus area impacts the city's processes and, and hoping that we can combine our, our two goal sets there. It's an excellent opportunity as well for MUM to enter into, I think, and to enter into the stormwater realm because it's, it's a growing, vastly growing industry and we all know of the different implications that stormwater has for our communities here in Iowa. So this is an exciting opportunity for all of us, I think.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry, this money would, it's, it's administrated through the SRF. So instead of our money paying interest, sewer will abate that debt. Instead of our money paying interest, it would of course theoretically be paying for these exercises.
Right, and it is available to us because we are deciding to plan for them as well, right?
Yes, we're, we're putting in an application and we think it's a, it's a pretty rich application. I mean, it's, it's full of a lot of good, you know, different directions we're going in to address all the goal sets that they have as well. And I think they'll recognize the value in our app and, and we're hoping to, you know, we've been partnering with DNR and the stuff we've been doing in storm, or in sewer as we did tonight. And so they're excited about where we're going and hoping a lot of smaller communities will look to our lead on this stuff.
Great, thanks, any questions for Melanie? And I, thanks for pointing that out, we, we could easily take this second resolution upfront to approve those first, that's fine.
If they both get approved, it doesn't matter the order.
Yeah. Any questions, council? All right, so now that we do understand the agreement that we're going to be getting into and, and how it would, it would be managed and some of the money that would flow through that, we'll go ahead and take the first resolution, which would be entering into a 28 agreement with the Jefferson County Soil and Water Conservation District for the Fairfield sponsored projects application.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the second resolution would be for the sponsored projects application. And was there a total on that? That's one and a half?
We're applying for 2.6 million.
2.6 million dollars is what we're applying for in that application.
Move to approve this application.
Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our business on wastewater and conveyance system for this evening. It's kind of, kind of exciting and kind of scary at the same time, but we're, we're on our way and we again thank everyone for the efforts that they've put into this, including Kevin and, and the wastewater treatment staff that have been very involved with our engineers as well. Next council, we'll move to first, is this going to be our first reading of ordinance, tree ordinance?
Yeah.
Tree planting amendment, rather? Michael, do you want to take that?
Sure. Well, in recent years, our urban forest has been under various threats. We lost 50 oak trees in Chautauqua Park to oak wilt, drought, disease, or old age. Now the EAB, the Emerald Ash Forest, is ravaging our ash population. And we've been working closely with the Iowa DNR to produce a comprehensive tree plan and a real working model of how we're going to go about protecting urban trees and ensuring that future generations can enjoy them and all the many benefits that they provide, the, the cleaning of the air, the rainwater, the aesthetics, so on. So part of that is updating our tree ordinance. Another part is we formed an arbor committee, it's been very active. They are forming a comprehensive tree plan, it's almost ready. It's referenced in this ordinance, but not spelled out in the ordinance, meaning that the plan itself can be updated more easily than an ordinance, because it's not, when required, three readings from the council to change, including a list of appropriate species trees to plant in right of way. So we've got these different threats to our urban trees, but we're also taking this opportunity to review our policies and just basically move forward in a bit smarter way. We're not going to put a tall tree under power lines, for example. And also, some of this language in here is specific to the Emerald Ash Forest threat. There are over the counter pesticides, insecticides that DNR's regulates, but a person doesn't need to be an expert or any sort of arborist to buy and apply. And so this, as per DNR recommendation, this ordinance does ban certain insecticidal, over the count remedies. So we'll get to it as we go. So the first sections are cleaning up language and taking out references to a 1995 version and also including an amendment that was voted through council in 2010. When you get to section nine, begins the new sections. First section is the, the maintenance section, so it says private property owners are responsible for maintaining the tree. If any part of the tree then causes a public health threat, that the city can come in and trim the tree or do something, even on private property. So basically is just setting that out there, that if it's, if it's necessary, the property owner will be notified, but if it's a threat, the tree is leaning over or a branch is coming down, about to come down, the city can act. Next is the protection, just some basic, don't want people cutting, carving, uh, public trees. So there's that portion. And then tree topping. Tree topping is essentially what it sounds like. It's cutting, cutting the very top of the tree in an effort to keep it from growing, say, up into power lines or whatnot. The problem with that is it's extremely damaging to the tree and it can end up causing it to die much sooner. So DNR recommends not allowing tree topping. So DNR recommends not allowing tree topping. Now, there are exceptions to any rule, so this isn't a big brother type rule that just creates more and more headaches for people, but we can let our, our utility company know. Lopping the top off a tree, not, not a good idea. We don't want to do that to our public trees. All it does is injure them and cause them to die and make us have to replace them sooner. So that is no longer allowed. And then section C is the ban on the soil drench and granular insecticides. These are basically topical treatments, over-the-counter products that are said to kill EAB. They might, they might not, but the problem is, is that they're dumped right onto the soil, and they kill a lot of other things besides EAB. So those will no longer be allowed in city limits. And then the final section here is, a lot of cities are doing this now, protecting what they call heritage trees. These are private trees. These aren't public property trees. These are trees anywhere in the city. We named, we identified four species, oak, American elm, sugar maple, oh, five, hickory and walnut. So any trees under those species that are greater or equal to 30 inches in diameter, say, breast high, so certain height off the ground, are protected, meaning the property owner has to show there's a, there's a valid reason for removing that tree. You can't just come in and cut down a really nice, healthy, old tree just for the heck of it. So a lot of this language I got from the DNR, so it's not, not reinventing the wheel here, we're just taking the best practices other communities have found to be effective. Final thing is just a change of wording. In the past, there was, I think it was called the Tree Enhancement Board, so we're just changing that to Arbor Committee. That's it in a nutshell. The Environment Committee signed off on these amendments, and I'm hoping the rest of the council will see the wisdom in having a good plan, protecting our trees. As I tell my kids, unlike a wild forest, urban trees don't plant themselves, so that we have to manage an urban forest. It doesn't, it doesn't take care of itself, so this is a good start.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any questions? Yes, John?
I have a couple. First of all, it looks like you did a lot of good work, did a lot of good things in here. I'm glad we have three chances at this, because the way it's presented here, it's really kind of hard to throw out what's old and what, put in what's new. If we could have another version of this with just how the ordinance will look after all the old stuff is out, it would be easier for me to follow it somehow. It just, it was very complicated the way it was written here, just for me to understand it. But the question I have is, this idea of, where is it? In the very first section, there was this thing about small stuff being prohibited in the.
Small trees?
Did small trees, okay, trees. Yeah. Any plantings less than trees shall not be allowed to grow higher than three feet, that thing. Now, I don't see that, again, you repeal that whole section, but I don't see that particular thing. I think that's important, because that means you could have bushes allowed, and that, we, I think we put that in there relatively recently, because in some intersections, there's bushes, other kind of plantings that don't have the vision that, you know, don't allow the, the vision to see traffic, cross traffic. So it would be good to keep that particular line in the new ordinance, I think, unless it's covered somewhere else in our code.
I'm pretty sure it is, because this was just included, the ordinance from 2010. Do you remember that one? That did deal with shrubs or other.
It's in another ordinance?
It was in an amendment. 2010 was an amendment.
In a tree amendment. So that's why we just put it in here, but in your new, that, you said you, this is the repealer?
Yeah. Again, it's a.
Is hereby repealed. So this whole section is hereby repealed, and the new one, I don't see it in there. That's why, again, I'm a little confused about what's old and what's new.
John, you're worried about the vision safety rate at the intersection?
Yeah, is it in the new, is it in the new amended ordinance? I'm not sure it is.
It's in the original ordinance, which isn't in this particular. You're not seeing the entire ordinance. You can see, if you want to get a copy, you can get your copy, but it's in the original ordinance.
So the answer is yes, it's still in the ordinance.
Yeah, well, make sure that it's protected in total here.
You can't plant too close to an intersection.
Or put the, put the shrubs in there. So, again, that, it would just help to have, you know, what the ordinance will look like with these new things.
Yeah, I agree, so.
So if we get that next time, that'd be great. Those are my only main questions. I guess the other thing is, one large tree every 60 feet, why so sparse?
That was not, that's not a new addition.
Well, that's hereby repealed.
Yeah, are you talking about the?
Large tree should plant no less than.
That might be the parking lot rule. See, some of this was put in before I was on here, so I'm not.
I would imagine anyone who would put that in would be worried about the fact that larger species of trees need about that far to canopy out and support each other through the canopy. I would think that's.
16 feet per side is not unusual for.
16 feet each side, but it says you can't plant one every 60 feet.
Yeah, not a lot, if you look at a larger oak or something, not a lot of space between trunk at 60 feet. Of course, the spread of the canopy might indeed be 50 to 60 feet.
Okay, those are my only questions, Mike.
Yeah, no, I agree. This is, the first portion says repealed and then amended. If you read it, it's almost the exact same thing, but the 2010 amendment, for whatever reason, took out shrubs. It stopped mentioning shrubs. I voted against that amendment because it had the no fruit trees in the right of way, which I didn't completely understand the reason for, but it passed nonetheless, and so this makes reference to that one.
Michael, you are going to take on shrubbery in this ordinance, aren't you?
Well, the original ordinance does include shrubbery mentioned. This isn't everything. These are just amendments.
And you're, we're going to be adding some, I guess, and maybe looking at new shrubbery? Or are we just going to keep?
Well, we can amend shrubbery if you like, but, but the purpose of this was to deal with.
Trees. So the Arbor, Arbor Committee deals with shade only, not shrubs.
Exactly, because we know, we did look in the entomology of that word.
Yes, it's just shade.
Just shade. Don't get much shade from a shrub.
Yeah, one thing to point out here that's very, it depends on the shrubbery, but one thing that's interesting to point out here, probably the time of day as well, actually, but is that this, for the first time, you see a specimen tree inclusion, or as we're calling it.
Heritage.
Heritage tree, much better verbiage there, but specimen or heritage tree is protected on private property, and that is a new thing for the city. And it's also an admirable thing for a city to do, of course, because it is unfortunate when, when someone buys lots or whatever with many of these wonderful trees on them and just simply cut them down, you know, for no reason, firewood or anything else. Now there will be, you know, if it's diseased or if there's a dangerous, there'll be some review there of staff when we go out to look at these trees, but.
Yeah, there's a whole list of, you know, if the heritage tree is dead or dying or diseased, damaged or injured, could potentially damage property, and there's a whole list of valid reasons to remove it. So it's not, it's not really a hugely limiting issue and probably something that wouldn't come up very often.
Probably not. I mean, I know that I may have faced it like once or twice over the years, you know, because most people do not want to cut down a 30-inch tree, so.
Let me, let me make a clarification here. So are we talking about heritage trees anywhere in the lot?
Yeah, private property.
Yes, private and public property.
Anywhere in the city limits.
Not just in the right of way.
A true tree protection ordinance is basically what we're gearing toward.
Yeah, John, I like your idea of getting a memo version of, of some of the proposals here.
Yeah, I can work with our.
And get the media also, so that we can really take a look at this.
Yeah. I'll work with John Morrison on that. This was, I don't say rushed, but I really wanted to start voting tonight so we'd be done in time for April before the ground thawed out and people started dumping insecticides all over the place. So I'll make a motion, pass it from the first to second reading.
Motion by Hallie to pass the ordinance as amended from the first to the second reading.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, we'll move then to our committee reports. First, Ways and Means. John, do you have a report for this evening, or is it, basically, our budget work was?
Our budget work was, was conducted at our, at our two Ways and Means meeting since, since its last council session. Nothing specific to report on that, except the budget came out, and please review it, and we will be voting on it next time.
Great, thank you, John. Next then, we'll have a report from the Personnel Committee. Doug?
Yes, our committee met on the 19th to begin developing mechanisms and procedures for evaluation of city employees, and we started with the top position, city administrator, and identified a list of stakeholders and some documents that we'll use for the evaluation process.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think that, Kevin, do you have anything to report in yours?
I do not, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Do any department heads have anything?
Great. Thank you, then. We do have some items regarding real estate purchases in our, for closed session, so we thank everyone for their participation thus far, and entertain a motion to go into